Meeting to order of July 3rd, City Council meeting 2012?
January.
January. What did I say?
July.
That is wishful, thank you.
This is January. Roll call.
Mayor Yanish.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christiansen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Docken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any proposed additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent items on the agenda. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. At this time, I would like to open the hearings to the ordinance authorizing issuance of the Geohospital revenue refunding bonds, Series 2012A. The hearing is open. Go ahead, Mike, you speak to us.
Okay. Well, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I just thought I'd make some introductory comments about where we've been and where we are today as we're talking about refunding our bonds and getting this restructure and refinanced moving forward. Bill Fenske and I had, even dating back to last summer, had been talking with our underwriters at Piper Jaffray who were underwriters for the original bond issue that was done in 2002. And just so you know, the bonds are callable in February of 2013. And so we're nearing that timeline to when the bonds are actually callable. And we've been talking about what's the right time to be looking at this. And we look at different calculations and have talked about different numbers and have looked at some different scenarios and some analysis at different times dating back to the middle part of this last summer, which is when we actually sat down with them for the first time over lunch and talked about where we're at with the bond issue and what may be the right time to look at refunding our original bond issue and refinancing these. At the time, and they do a calculation, a net present value calculation, which really looks at, in simple terms, the savings compared to what we're doing now versus what we could get. It's a future value of dollars type of thing that's discounted back. And there's a statutory threshold of 3% that we would need to be at to trigger this or to be able to do it. And at that time, we had had lunch with John and Steve from Piper Jaffray and they had run some analysis and looked at this. And we were, I want to say, a little bit north of 3%. So it was fairly tight. And at the time, their recommendation was, I think you better hold off on this, it isn't the right time. Let's continue to watch the market and look at where things are at and we can look at it and talk about it here in the coming months. Well, we had started to engage the city finance department, city administrator, and Springstead also in the discussion. And if my memory serves me right, I think we had a conversation, it was sometime in the fall, we had had a discussion about where things were at that time. And even between summer and fall, the savings were increasing and it was looking like it was a better situation and maybe we should take a longer, harder look at this and refunding the bonds. Since that, or since that time, the net present value savings, we believe, is somewhere in the neighborhood of 7%, which, again, in simple terms, just means that the savings versus what were set up under the current bond structure now in interest, we're saving substantial dollars and it's certainly worthwhile for us to be looking at. And if you recall, we had had a discussion with the finance committee back last fall as well, as well as with Springstead and with the city. And as we were wanting to actually pursue this last fall, and the window was closing fairly fast and the advice from the, all the financial folks was, you don't want to do this around the holidays. And so there's a fairly significant timeline and lead time over the course of two to three months, where, as you folks know, we've got to have public hearings and approved resolutions and a number of steps we have to go through. And so we felt like it was getting too tight back then to make a run at it late in the year. And knowing there's a variety of factors in the marketplace that could change, we had talked a little bit about that and we're hoping that things still stay to where it's advantageous for us to be looking at refunding and refinancing our bond issue. And fortunately, with some things that have gone on in Washington and in the marketplace, it's still an advantageous time, it's still a very good time and it looks very appealing for us to be pursuing this. So after, a few weeks ago, we took to our board an initial recommendation that ultimately our board approved that was sent over here to the city council, recommending to the council that you call for a public hearing, which is the first part of the process and really triggers the process. So we still believe it's definitely the right time to do this. And like I said, we're in the neighborhood of about a net present value savings of about 7%. And Springstead's going to make a presentation, PowerPoint to Kathy on this, and we'll show you in dollars what that equates to. And we've talked about a variety of different things. Just so you know, we've had Springstead involved as the city's financial advisor. We've been talking to Piper Jaffray, who did, who are our underwriters and did the original issue. We've also took, taken a look at a couple of firms, Piper and another firm, and had an outside firm by the name of Kaufman Hall has weighed in on this issue objectively as a third party on our behalf to make sure that the proposals that were put forward made sense and ultimately they made a recommendation to us with the proposals and moving in the direction of having Piper continue to be our underwriting firm. So we think the time is right now to do this. We would, we've got a timeline set up. We've been having every other week conference calls with multiple stakeholders, bond council, as well as representatives from Kaufman Hall, Springstead, Piper Jaffray, the city and the hospital. And so this has been in the works for some time. We've been working on the legwork and making sure that we have the details so that we can come to this public hearing tonight and present the information and answer any questions that the council would have. So with that, I would just say, again, I think things are lined up right so that we can hopefully move forward and get this done and begin to reap the savings based on the current market and what rates are at so that we can have some savings. And one of the other things that I would just briefly mention is, we've talked about is, in the, in the part of the process is, we would bring to our hospital board any and all recommendations, have our board approve what those recommendations are and then send them over here to the, to the full city council. One of the things we talked about was length of the bond issue. And we're right around in the neighborhood of 20. And as we look to refund, the question is, we've asked ourselves and has been asked of us throughout the process is, would you look to maybe lengthen the bond issue, the length or term of the bonds, or would you look to shorten that? And we haven't made, we haven't come to any final conclusions yet. I would say it's likely that we're not going to look to extend it out any further. We may try to shorten it just a tad. One thing that Bill Fenske and I have talked about is trying to keep, just maintaining the existing principal and interest payments, that level of payment, which would shrink the numbers of years to in the neighborhood of, I want to say, 18 or so. So it may be that it's a tad shorter, but we're going to, we're going to run some analysis. And one thing we talked with our board about is bringing back to them a couple of different scenarios of looking at this debt and what the term or length should be and arriving at a recommendation that they can hopefully approve and can send over here to the city. So that's just a quick synopsis of where we've been, when we started and how we got to where we are here tonight. So I'm going to turn things over here to Springstead for a quick PowerPoint presentation and then we can answer questions for you.
Sure, thank you, Mike. Welcome, Kathy.
Good evening. I believe that you've all got a copy of this in front of you for doodling or whatever is helpful to do with that. What we're asking this evening is that you conduct the public hearing and then adopt the ordinance that would permit an issuance of up to $47 million of bonds. And the sole purpose for the transaction would be to refund the outstanding 2002 bonds. And the 47 is a permissive amount, but the only amount that would be issued would be what is needed to accomplish the refinancing. And I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Just by means of background, in 2002, $51.2 million was sold. It had been issued, authorized by a referendum. And the bonds were used to construct new space, renovate existing space and demolish some outdated space. Right now, there's 43.645 million outstanding. They mature, this is after the February 1st, 2012 principal payment. So the remaining bonds mature from 2013 to 2032. They're all at 5% coupon rates. And the bonds, as Mike mentioned, are callable in February of 2013. What's been driving this whole discussion is illustrated on the chart on the next page, which shows the bond buyers index, which is something that we track in the industry that gives a relative position of the marketplace for tax exempt bonds. And the solid red line is a line that represents general obligation bonds. And you can see that although there have been some ups and downs over the past months, we're still in a very attractive position across the last five years. The refunding itself can result in interest rates that give you an NIC or kind of an average rate of 3.85, so quite a drop from the 5%, which is what's creating those savings. The bond proceeds, for the most part, will be put into an escrow and that account will be held by a bank. And the only purpose for which those proceeds can be used would be to pay the existing debt on the 2002 bonds, including calling all the bonds on 2013, February 1st, 2013. The escrows invested in securities, the securities that you can invest that kind of an account in are prescribed by statute. They are primarily US treasuries and certain agencies that are guaranteed by the US, so very secure investments. The savings estimates, future value, so dollars out whenever they happen, about 4.7 million. And if you present value those all into today's dollars, it would be about 3.26 million, estimate of 6.48% of the refunded debt. The next page, page six, has estimated sources and uses. And as Mike mentioned, they're still, still have the exact structure under consideration. So the numbers that I'm looking at tonight have a couple of assumptions in them. One of them is that the savings is spread out evenly year to year across the term and we'll look at that schedule specifically in just a minute. The other thing is an assumption that the bonds are sold at a premium. And this is a pricing technique that we're seeing a lot of over the last year and a half or two years. What it results from is a coupon rate on the bonds that's higher than what an investor needs. And in order to drive their yield down, they pay more than the par amount of the bonds. In this case, the pricing that's illustrated is generating about $3.5 million of additional proceeds. And that is used together with the par amount of the bonds to fund that escrow and pay costs of the transaction. If at the time of this sale, it would be better to have what we call par coupons, where the coupons and the yield to the investor are the same, there would be no premium and so we'd have to increase the amount of the bond transaction. What we're estimating at this time would be that just over $46 million would be needed if there was no premium. And hence the 47 million that you see in the authorizing ordinance, just an amount that we know will cover the refinancing regardless of what the best way to structure the coupons and the yields are. In the sources and uses, the other items that are there, there's a debt service reserve fund that the city holds. That was funded with the original bond proceeds. It's just over $3.5 million. That's a source for the refunding. But you can also see down below that in addition to funding the escrow, which costs just under 46 million, we're putting 3.3 million back into a debt service reserve that the city will again hold. There are some financing costs. We're working at refining that number. So that number will change and there'll be a detail of that available for the city and the hospital. The debt service reserve fund is set at the average debt service or approximate debt service on the bonds. So as the debt service has come down, the amount that we need for that reserve comes down. So that's why the new amount would be smaller than what was set up for the existing issue. On page seven, you have the existing transaction, principal and interest, total payments. You can see our, most of them are around $3,550,000. There is another element in this, the debt service reserve fund is invested. And while investment rates are pretty crummy right now, it does generate some income and so the total amount due is reduced by the interest that's earned on that fund. The next page, page eight, has an estimate of the refunding debt service. And you can see there the coupons. I'll show you a table in just a little bit that will demonstrate coupons we've got here and I've laid the yields alongside of it, so you'll be able to see the difference there. And you can see the debt service, for the most part, is around that $3.3 million level. The next two pages, pages nine and 10, are illustrations of the results. You can see graphically on page nine and the raw numbers on page 10 comparing the net debt service, so the debt service after the credit for the reserve earnings, compared against the old net debt service. So savings of around $240,000 each year. There are a couple of structuring dynamics that are still in play. I've got two of the bigger ones here for you. One is, again, whether this scenario that's in front of you is assuming that there's a fairly significant premium received on the bonds. The type of pricing that is best at the time that we come to market will determine whether a premium is realized or not. Again, the bond size is driven totally by what is needed in that escrow account to pay the old bonds. And the federal statute is actually quite strict on this. You are not able to generate any additional funds. So the only thing that will be funded will be the redemption of the old bonds and the establishment of the new debt service reserve. The savings calculated either under this pricing scenario or a par coupon scenario reflects all of the costs and reflects all of the principal and interest that will be paid. So when we tell you the net present value savings number is this, or the net future value savings number is that, those numbers have all of the costs taken into consideration and that's the true benefit back to the hospital. And the final structuring dynamic that could make this look different is that the structure itself isn't finalized. And so if we shortened the issue up, as Mike mentioned, it will look a little different. On page 12, I did put both the coupons. We just saw those on the new debt service schedule. And the yields, the yield is what the investor would buy at. So to the extent that the coupons are higher than the yields, the investor has to pay more for that in order to drive the yield down to the levels that are shown here. And that's what's generating the premium in most of these years. The final slide that's there shows the key events for the rest of the process. There's this evening, the public hearing. The, if the council adopts the ordinance, it will be published. January 9th, we'll be back to talk to the finance committee about the, what's referred to as a parameters resolution. These bonds will be sold through a negotiated process. And a pricing committee will be established with representatives of the hospital and of the city. And together with the financial advisors, we will work with Piper to establish the final pricing for the bonds. The hospital will consider their parameters resolution on the 11th of January. We'll be back in front of the council on the 17th. That will be the action where you actually give the pricing committee the authority to sell the bonds. And on the 7th, we're estimating that the bond pricing would occur, closing out towards the end of February. And in February of 2013, that escrow account will redeem the remaining 2002 bonds. So that's an overview of what we're up to. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have or mics available as well.
Does the council have any questions? Are there questions from the public? If not, I will close the public hearing and open up for discussion, council. Councilman Christiansen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll move to adopt an ordinance to permit the issuance of the bond.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt, assign a number and publish ordinance. Further discussion?
I just, I just got some questions. You probably said it, but I'm trying to catch up. Okay, the savings are projected to be about $4.5 million, right? 4.5? And at the end, Kathy, you said the escrow will pay the remaining 2002 bonds. How much is that? I missed that.
Forty-two thousand.
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, right now... Wait with me just a second. Right now, there is, there's a payment due on February 1 of 2012. And after that payment, there's $43,645,000 left outstanding. The escrow will pay just over $1 million on August 1 of 2012. And then on February 1 of 2013, it will pay another interest payment of just over $1 million plus the $43,645. So on February 2 of 2013, the old bonds will be entirely redeemed. They'll be gone. And the only thing left outstanding would be the, the new refunding bonds.
Councilman Anderson, did you have a question?
I did, thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is fairly sophisticated and complicated way of doing it, it seems like, isn't it? I mean, I don't remember us doing any bonds similar to this. Is this typical or out of the ordinary?
Mr. Mayor, councilmember, it's, it's, there are two types of refundings. One is this type where the call date is out more than 90 days. And these types are defined by federal statute and regulation. It's referred to as an advanced refunding. So anytime you're more than 90 days in front of the call date, you'll be establishing an escrow. And that escrow will pay, eventually pay off the old bonds. I don't recall the city's more recent refunding transactions were probably current refundings, which simply means that you can call all of the old bonds out within 90 days. So we sell the bonds, we give you the proceeds, that call date comes up and you pay off the old bonds. So they're, they're both regulated by the same set of federal statutes in terms of what you can invest in and how much you can borrow and so on. But when that call happens is, makes the difference between whether you have an escrow or not. They do get complicated. There is a party that you usually don't see in your transactions, which is a verification agent. And that agent will, they'll verify the bond yield on the new bonds because you'll be limited in terms of what you can invest by that. And they'll also verify what's due on the old bonds and when, and that the investments that were purchased into the escrow are adequate to pay off what we intend them to pay off.
Okay. And did I hear you say that this is going to be a negotiated thing? This doesn't go out for bids? This is a negotiated?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Now, we have a motion on the table for the, adapt, assign a number and publish this ordinance. Roll call?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Councilman Docken, did you have something you wanted to discuss?
Yeah, I wonder if you would allow Mr. Stram to talk about the survey that was recently done at the hospital and also with the Board of Directors, is a very stable part of the Rice Hospital now. And they have been reelected now for another year, so maybe you could talk on those two. Mike?
If you're up to it, I know you're feeling a little bit under the weather.
Okay. Well, two things. One, maybe more is housekeeping first. Our board just reelected officers at the last meeting here in December and the current officers are going to remain the same. David Anfison has been our board chairman. Steve Cedarstrom has been our vice chairman. Mike Gardner has been our treasurer and Dr. Robert Kruger has been our secretary. And so that slate of officers was re-upped or re-approved the other night. And I would just say too, as we, I talk with boards about officers and continuity of board, it's, from an administrative standpoint, I think it's very important that we have continuity with those officers over, over so many years versus having change every year within, within what I refer to as an executive committee. So I think that's great. We've got really a solid board and appreciate the council's support of the existing board members that we have on the Rice Hospital board. The second thing that councilmember Docken asked me to speak to is something I did update the board on at last month's meeting. And we had recently a joint commission accreditation survey. And for those of you who don't know what the joint commission is, the joint commission is an accrediting body that surveys hospitals and health systems. And predominantly, I referred to it as kind of the gold standard of accrediting bodies in surveys. We have a survey every three years. Typically, the joint commission surveys larger hospitals and health systems, we being one of them in this region. I would say if you look around the region, most hospitals and communities that are smaller than Wilmer, most of those hospitals, I'm not aware of actually any of them that are surveyed by joint commission, they're state surveyed, which it's an optional thing that you can do. But we have been joint commission surveyed for years. And we've been preparing for this survey and we don't just prepare a couple months in advance, we're, we're preparing continuously. And it isn't necessarily preparing for the survey, it's making sure that we have the right protocols in place, the right processes in place so that we're providing good quality care to every patient that comes to our organization in a safe manner. And so I just updated the board on that. We had a, just a quick synopsis, we had a very positive survey. When the joint commission comes in, we actually had four different individuals from the joint commission that came in. There was an MD that came in that spent lots of time looking at various clinical areas. There was a nurse surveyor that looked at clinical areas but more focused on nursing practices and so forth. They also did a side-by-side survey of our hospice program along with our acute care operation. And so there was a nurse surveyor that was there to survey the hospice program. She spent actually all five days, all week, going to different sites and surveying her hospice program. And then also along with that is life safety and environment of, environment of care facilities, if you will. So there's an engineer that came on site as well and was a part of the survey process. The hospital was, survey itself was three days, the hospice program was all five days. They're very comprehensive, they're very thorough. They took a look at our organization kind of inside and out. They do what we call patient tracers. So they go find an existing patient that's in the hospital and kind of trace the care of that patient from admission to discharge. And they're very stringent. And they're very stringent, they look at lots of things. The M.D., for instance, shadowed or watched a surgical procedure in the O.R., watched Dr. Unger, one of our urologists, do a surgical procedure. Actually, that went very well. He spoke highly of that, but he was in there, kind of in the trenches. They also spend a lot of time... In today's day and age, medication management is a huge issue. So they very closely monitor our pharmacy department, survey that, and look at our protocols and processes and so forth. Long story short, the survey went very well. They now... They've made some changes in how they go about surveys, but as of today, they issue both what they call direct findings as well as indirect findings. Direct findings being something that directly impacts patient care. Indirect findings is something that doesn't directly impact, but in an indirect way would impact patient care to patients that come to the hospital. And we had, in both the hospice and the acute care operation, less than five, I want to say exactly, four maybe in our acute care area, and then six or so that were indirect findings, and a similar kind of a number for the hospice program as well. I would say typically, and they shared this with us, too, most facilities have more direct findings than that. And, you know, it's one of those things that you prepare for it, and staff are pretty anxious when they get here, and surveyors have a tendency to make people kind of nervous sometimes. But I've always said, you know, we prepared, we worked hard for this. You go forward with the survey, their job is to come in, they're going to find something. What we can do is have a good survey, but correct whatever needs to be corrected and moved on, and move on. The indirect findings, we have to respond within 45 days, and the indirect findings in 60 days. But I felt, all in all, it was a very positive survey. They spoke very highly of the staff. In fact, we had interviews with them first thing in the morning, every morning administration did. David Anfison, our board chair, came in and met with the group along with administration. One day, there's a leadership part of the process that they do and conduct interviews on, and David did a nice job in speaking from a governance level about the hospital. And they had very positive comments about the culture from within the organization. And their comment to me and to us was, you know, you can walk into an organization, and within about five or 10 minutes, you can tell what kind of culture there is in the organization. And that's something that we pride ourselves on, that we work hard on, providing a good culture, a good environment in which to work for our employees. We do the right thing in providing good, high-quality and in a safe environment. But sometimes you never really know. Sometimes you get pretty close to the action in looking at your own operation, and it's refreshing to hear a group such as the joint commission come in from the outside and tell us that they believe our culture is very strong and very good. So we were very pleased, all in all, with the survey.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
See, I think we need to... Thank you very much, by the way, both of you, Kathy and Mike. We'll open the hearing for the ordinance rezoning certain property from R4 medium-density multifamily residential to R3 low-density multifamily residential. The hearing is open. Bruce, you want to toss about that?
Mayor Yanish, members of the council. The planning commission initiated this rezoning a while back because of some issues property owners were having in selling their single-family properties in the R4 district. By rezoning those properties from R4 to R3, it will allow the mortgage underwriting issues to be eliminated, and people will no longer have to deal with the non-conforming use issue when they try to sell their single-family homes. The planning commission held a hearing and has approved the rezoning request, and it's recommendation of staff that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Thank you, Bruce. Are there any questions or comments from the public? Hearing done, I will close the public hearing and hand it over to the council. Councilman Anderson.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published.
Say it. A motion has been made and seconded that the ordinance be adopted, assigned a number, and published. Any discussion? Councilman Baggerly.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bruce, just a question. The concern I heard from an underwriter was with the R4, if the home was destroyed by fire or wind damage, our ordinance said that the home could not be rebuilt. That's not the way it is for R3?
In order for it to be rebuilt, it has to be rebuilt as a conforming use, and if it's owned R3, the single-family home is a permitted use or a conforming use in that R3 district, so it would be allowed to be rebuilt. That's the primary reason for it. They're worried about issuing a mortgage on a property that if some disaster occurred, they'd be holding a worthless piece of paper.
Okay.
So this solves that problem.
But we could have changed the zoning back to R4 and allowed the house to be rebuilt too, couldn't we?
If you wanted to allow single-family homes in an R4, which I don't think we really want to do because that creates problems citywide, or it creates an issue citywide, what I'd rather see, if there's a developer that's interested in building R4-density housing adjacent to our central business district, that they would come back to the planning commission and have a number of parcels packaged together, and at that point, rezone it back to an R4 and deal with those on a case-by-case basis. Our comprehensive plan clearly calls for densities higher than single-family adjacent to the central business district, but until the demand is there, I think this is a good way to deal with the issue and at least not make problems worse for people that are in a difficult housing market already.
Okay. Thank you.
Any further questions or discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dokken.
Aye.
Baggerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. At this time, we'll open up the Wilmer City Council open forum. Is anybody scheduled to speak?
No, sir.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the... Remove from the table the ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer. Do I hear a motion?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to remove from the table the ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer. I see we have members here from the Charter Commission.
We just need to remove it from the table.
Pardon me?
We need to finish the motion just to remove it from the table.
We got a vote. Oh, okay, last vote. The motion has been made and seconded to remove the ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer from the table. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. Okay, we are removed from the table, the ordinance amending the charter of the city of Wilmer. Hearing done. Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I believe there needs to be a motion to approve it or disapprove it, if I'm not mistaken. And I guess I will speak against it because it's three issues that I don't agree with on it, but it's a matter of who makes the motion, Kathy.
It does not make the motion. Like, the general motion would be to move to approve, and then it becomes defeated. So to adopt, to give it a number and publish, it would be the consistent motion with passed action, I guess.
If there's somebody willing to make that motion.
Correct. And if the motion is not made, it's just dead in the water?
After 30 days, on the table, it will die. Yes, it will die. It will not be approved.
Okay.
I would make the motion, Mr. Mayor. Second. Motion has been made and seconded to amend the ordinance?
Adopt the amending ordinance, give it a number, and publish it. It's an amending ordinance.
Adopt amending ordinance, adopt a number, and publish it. All those in favor, that's a roll call.
Now we need to...
What a discussion.
Discussion. Let's do a discussion. Open for discussion.
Well, I'll start, Mr. Mayor, if I may. Just to the fact that the changes in here from making the minutes approved by the MUC, the planning commission, and the hospital board, make it a supermajority, I can't vote for that. If we're going to do that, we could just as well sell the MUC and the hospital. I mean, we are the last line of defense for the public, we're the elected officials that need to oversee both of these entities, and I understand that the request was not made from any one of these three boards for that supermajority. If I'm wrong, correct me, Sean, but I really believe that the public is defended by us with the elected officials, we're the bottom line, and I think it should remain a simple majority to overrule any of their actions of their board. And because of that, I do not support the present... Or the presented amended ordinance.
Sean, would you like to comment to that? Is there any further discussion? Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think it's just fine that we go to six. I don't have a problem. I think it's a little bit overboard to say that we should just go ahead and sell those. You know, we appoint what we think are qualified individuals to these boards to make decisions, and I think we need to listen to them. And if something is dramatically wrong, I don't see a problem with it rising to a level that it takes a supermajority. You know, and further than that, I don't know how many times we met with the Charter Commission, but it was a number of times, and we talked to them, we talked about all these issues. We asked them to reconsider. Some they did reconsider, some they didn't, and I'm sure their votes weren't unanimous on all of these things either, but, you know, here again, we have a group of people that have worked three long years, and they've worked long and hard, and I want to go along with their recommendation. So I support the amending the charter.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Reese?
I would... Did what councilmember Anderson was saying, and, you know, we just made appointments, some appointments this evening, and, you know, those were carefully considered, who we appoint. And I think whether it's the hospital or the Municipal Utilities Commission, we need to just carefully consider when we make those appointments, who is on there. And we still have an override. I mean, with the six votes, we still have an override. I do not have a problem at all with that.
If I may, thank you. Councilman Christensen, if I may ask, you said that there were three items that you were opposed to?
There's several other ones, but the major ones are those three entities, the hospital board, the planning commission, and the MUC. Those three are three changes in the ordinance, or the amended ordinance. Another one, if you... If I may, is the adopting the rules of order for city councils by the Minnesota Mayors I think we're pretty civil in all of our conversations and discussions and deliberations at the council level here. I don't see that we need a written book of rules for how we conduct ourselves. It may come to the point where somebody's sitting in the audience with this book and interrupts us, saying, "Point of order, point of order." This could happen 10 times in a meeting. None of us are going to memorize all those rules, and once in a while, we may make a mistake, and somebody does say, "Point of order," and we could extend these meetings. And I personally don't think they're necessary. Ed Edmond suggested that we use... What's the Roberts Rules of Orders? And our own city attorney said, advised us not to. I mean, that's really complicated. It's a book about, I don't know, 3/4 of an inch thick, and you'll never memorize all of that stuff. And again, I think we... Our discussions are civil. We make motions, we defeat them, we pass them. I don't think it's something that should be in the ordinance or the amended ordinance. And overall, I think it's pretty long. Our own constitution for the United States is not very many pages long and not very many words long, and this is, I'm going to say, three times longer, just for a city That's enough said for that.
Thank you, Councilman. Do we take a vote at this point?
If the discussion is concluded.
The discussion is concluded?
Councilman Reese.
Councilman Reese?
I have a question of process. If it does not pass here, does it automatically go to the electorate?
No. No, sir. It goes back to the Charter Commission to make some decisions of what they want to do.
Goes back to the Charter Commission to what?
They can make decisions of what they want to do, and they would have to make a decision to go toward the electorate.
Okay. Or what is the option to the... Going to the electorate?
They can listen to the comments tonight and pull out some of those sections and come on back. They can shelve the whole project, they can do all sorts of options.
Thank you. Mr.... Councilman Allen?
Well, I want to first of all thank the commission for their work and their many, many, many hours of deliberation and discussion, and also how you communicated with the city council. You explained to us what the provisions were going to be changed and what you were going to go through, and I appreciate that communication. I don't have any particular problem with this. Of course, I could find fault if I wanted to, but overall, I have no problem with the 6-2 vote. And my reason for that is, and the rationale in the years being in the city council, I can recall where there's been a vote that's been that close, where we had to pull any of the Rice Hospital or MUC minutes. And I can't recall that any time a individual, a city council person, felt there was a need to pull the minutes and discuss it, it was always passed. It's never not been. And any action we thought was one person thought was questionable, it was always supported. And I think that... I think that in itself speaks for the character of the council. I would hope that it would continue to be that way, and I think the supermajority only shows a level of trust, as Mr. Anderson reported, to a level of trust to the people that we have put on the commission, and I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman DeBlee?
Yeah, I agree with... It's Member Alman, and would also like to thank the work the commission has done on this and the work they're... They have many, many hours that they've put into it. I just want to make the point of the Roberts Rules or Muriel Rules that are stated in here that we would use to govern what our meetings are like and what rules we use for our meetings. I think that's entirely appropriate that we have some type of rules that we meet under. Even though we're quite civil now, there's been times, or times in the future where that may not be the case, and we should have some type of rules that we operate under. So I think that's entirely appropriated the way it's placed in the charter, so...
Thank you, Councilman. Any other questions or comments?
Councilmember Christiansen has a question.
Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Councilman Anderson made an interesting comment just a while ago, and that's... He believed that many of these items in the proposed amended ordinance were discussed, and the votes on the Charter Commission were not unanimous. I guess I'd like to hear whether or not the vote on the 6-2 supermajority was unanimous
Sean Meskey, I will tell you that we... If you recall, long ago, there was actually the position of the Charter Commission to actually eliminate the veto authority in its entirety. That was a one-vote difference for it to pass. And after lots of discussion, as you pointed out, that the taxpayers are the stakeholders in those entities, they... We went away from that, and we had lots of spirited debate on that supermajority piece. And I mentioned this last time I was here, that the changes that we're recommending... And I mentioned this last time I was here, that the changes that we're recommending were never to be an indictment or a reflection of the current city council's dealings. It was taking a look at what would be a document that would be the best for the city of Wilmer. And so as we pursued that, we took away that whole idea of if we've ever seen it happen or whatnot, we looked at, it would be nice if it was consistent through the charter. And when we went with that language, then it did pass unanimously, if I recall. You'd have to check the minutes, but I'm pretty sure, we have other members here, that we did have an agreement on that piece based on that rationale, not based on anything else, just that it would make it consistent.
Questions or comments?
If I may, Mr. Mayor, thank you. I know that there's some parts of this charter that may be conflict with the present ordinance. I can't think of them offhand, but I know that, I believe that our city attorney had mentioned it. Is that, am I correct in that, Rich?
The proposed changes to the charter conflict with the existing city ordinances?
Or are the same as?
I don't recall that discussion.
I've gone through this thing three, four times, and I'm drawing a blank to which it is. I don't know if it's administrators' duties, but we do have, we have an ordinance that is mentioned in the charter, and if that was the case, would the charter supersede the ordinance?
I might be able to help you. I know that the city administrators' duties, we did take that directly out of ordinance. And at the time, we had recommended a change in that about the supervision of department chairs, I believe it was something like that. And we took that out, and we, per one of our meetings and suggestions. And so I don't believe there is anything that's in those sections that's inconsistent with the ordinance that put them into existence.
Okay. Thank you, Sean, and thank you, commission, for all the work you've done, too.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where does the, where does it say that it has to be an 8-0 vote? That isn't in the...
State law.
Pardon me?
I believe that's state law.
Oh. Pretty well takes care of that. Thank you.
Any other further questions or comments?
I'll make just two, based on some of the comments. We've covered the supermajority, but the parliamentary procedure rules, the commission felt very strongly that those needed to be in effect. And we actually had originally put that down, penned to paper, with a variety of different options, Roberts being just one of them, another one named Jefferson, one named Masons. We discovered a whole litany of them. And then actually, the city council, you had the League of Minnesota Cities look at it, and they actually recommended picking one, and they thought the best one to use was the rules, the mayor's rules that we have thrown in there. So that is not our language, that was from the League of Minnesota Cities attorney that put those in there. And the last I wanted to say is, Ron's absolutely right, that that is a very lengthy document that we have. And when we approached this, it's always been our idea to do this in two phases. The first phase is to actually get over the things that might be controversial, where we are on the same page. And then another one was just an edit to make the document much shorter. We realized that it is very lengthy. And so that was going to be a second phase that we'd go into at that time.
Thank you, Sean. Kevin, I don't recall, is there a motion on the table?
Yes, sir, there is. It will be a roll call, the discussion has completed.
Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
No.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
No.
Six ayes, two nays, ordinance is defeated.
Motion fails. Rich, could you give me some advice as to where we go from here? The issue is done on the city council level, it just goes back to charter commission to do what they want to do. Okay. Thank you for coming tonight, appreciate it. We have, number 10, the consideration of a resolution appointing the responsible authority. Charlene, would you speak to that, please?
Sure. Mayor and council, you have before you a resolution, and this deals with the Minnesota Data Practices Acts, and it requires the appointment of a responsible authority. In the past, it has been the city's practice to appoint the city administrator by name to that responsibility, and I would make that recommendation that you would approve the resolution that would list myself, the city administrator, Charlene Stevens, as the responsible authority for the purpose of meeting all requirements of Minnesota statutes for data practices act.
Mr. Mayor, I'll make that motion or introduce that resolution.
Sir. The motion has been made and seconded to adopt the resolution appointing Charlene Stevens as the responsible authority. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dokken?
Aye.
Fagerly?
Aye.
DeBlique?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christiansen?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. At this point, we'll go to the announcement of the council committee meeting dates. Councilman Reese? January 10th, Tuesday, 4:45, Public Works, Public Safety. Councilman Amen?
Wednesday, January 11th, 4:45, Labor Relations.
Councilman Dokken?
January 12th, 4:45, Conference Room 1.
And that is community development?
Yes.
And Councilman Anderson?
Finance will be made Monday, the 9th, 4:45.
Thank you. Any miscellaneous?
Motion to adjourn.
It's a move, second.
The motion has been made and seconded to adjourn, we are adjourned.